Tonight, I'm going to say a few words about one of our colleagues who is leaving us. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our newly elected state senator Stefano Famigetti. Thank you all. That was for you, Brad. I want to wish him all the best as he takes part in his final meeting with the North Providence Town Council. Stefano has been more than just one of my closest political colleagues. He's become one of my closest friends, someone I consider like a younger brother. While his departure is undoubtedly a loss for this council, it's a tremendous gain for the town of North Providence and the entire state of Rhode Island. In my eyes, no one could ever replace Senate President Dominic Ruggiero, but if anyone can, this guy right here comes pretty close. So, you know, many elected officials, they always say they'll never forget where they came from, and they usually do. But I can assure you, Stefano, he knows where he came from, and he means it when he says it. His dedication to this community is sincere, and he has a great passion for this town. And I think we'll deeply miss him. So on behalf of myself and my colleagues on the North Providence Town Council, I want to thank him for his service to this town. Wish him continued success in the Rhode Island Senate. We're proud of him, and we know he'll make us even prouder in the years to come. So, thank you to Stefano. Thank you. All right, now for the fun stuff. Acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action vote were through God to the acceptance of meeting minutes for the meetings of July, June 3rd, July 7th, and July 14th. Have a motion to accept. Motion's been made by Councilman Pollock. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, purchases of town properties. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on the purchasing of the following properties owned by the town of North Providence. A, plat five, lot 683 through 694 at 1119 Douglas Avenue. Request from Meta Mill LLC to purchase for the purpose of accommodating thirteen units as confirmed by the planning board. And B, plat four, lots 632, 633, and 634, request from Steven Maurisi to purchase. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, both of these parcels of property, and I know that you received a copy of both plot plans, will not incur any additional services for those parcels. The first, down behind the Geneva Mills there, there's property there that we've owned for quite some time that's not buildable. We have the opportunity to get some revenue from this gentleman, which will also allow him to build more units in the building, the structure that's there. So, I think it's the right thing to do after speaking with a few of you. I had Mr. Andolfo appraise the property. This is his appraisal, so I'm just going to suggest that we consider selling the property again because it's just a situation of it's unbuildable and we can derive some revenue. That's it.
You all have.
If any questions, one of the principals of the properties here, there may be two fellows that may want to, if you have any questions, speak as to what the plans are there.
Okay, can the gentleman who from Meta Mill come up? Just state your names for the record, please.
Good evening, Council President. I'm Attorney Jake D'Amico. I'm here on behalf of the LLC. This is one of the principals here, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, just state your name for the record, please.
I'm sure I'll do that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
These are going to be thirteen condos?
Yes, sir.
They're going to be built on here?
Correct, yes.
Not thirteen buildings with more than one?
I wish.
Well, yeah, we don't, but just for clarification, because we've got a lot of stuff not clarified, but, and this is adjacent to the property that's already there, so I know the mayor says it's not buildable. Obviously, it's not buildable to us, but it's buildable to you.
Right, yes.
Okay, just, again, just clarification, make it simple. Did they should, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
So are these going to be one-bedroom condos, two-bedroom condos?
They're going to be one-bedroom condos.
Square footage would be what?
An average, it'd be around between six and eight hundred square feet.
Again, these will be rented, not sold, right?
Is this the same parcel land where there was an unfortunate situation last year?
I'm sorry to catch.
Is this the same parcel land where they had that unfortunate situation back there last year?
That I'm not sure of.
It butts it. Okay.
Mayor, just one question. Looking through the paperwork, it said at one point, the, I'm losing it now, here it is. Per tax assess of the subject lots are assessed to the estates of Edith, Philomena, Gloria, and Tony Lee, Aiello, and the town of North Providence. So does the town own, have full title to all these lots? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And right now, from the pictures that I see, there was a encampment there and something else that was behind the building. That was, okay, just making sure that was the same situation.
Mayor, quick question by me. Did the town foreclose tax title on the four lots? Does the town have tax title, or did they foreclose the tax title on the four lots? But we haven't foreclosed it yet?
I don't think so. Now, based on what I was told.
Okay.
I'll double check that before I can just make sure.
We can do a, we can get order title and research and find out for certain.
Just want to, prior to approving the sale, we just want to make sure that we're conveying this full title.
Can we make that continue?
Do I have a motion to approve this pending?
I mean, I understand. I mean, I'm applying appropriately in either way.
Okay. Approving the tax title?
Approving, I guess, the motion would be, is there a motion to approve the sale, subject, I guess, to a title search indicating that the town owns full title to the properties?
Okay. Okay, motion to approve, subject to the town owning full title of the properties listed above, so move. Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Pollock. Is there any other questions? Maybe none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck with everything.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Item number three, request of recent issues the mayor would like to address via ordinance. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on the most recent issues that he would like to address via ordinance as follows. A, issues with cars parking on front lawn and suggested max driveway pavement areas and front yards. B, timeframe limits for storage containers and dumpsters and registration of the same with a fee structure for violations. And C, registration for donation containers along with a fee structure. D, updating business trade name certificates. Mayor?
Mr. President, I would ask that you refer this, these issues to your ordinance committee, and so that the inspections will be part of the discussion. And we may need a new ordinance or two, but I think also some strengthening of a couple of our ordinances so that when our inspectors go out, they have the goods to cite problems in people's neighborhoods, and that's what we're facing right now. So if you could just pass that on.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the mayor on this one? Do you have a motion to send all four items to the ordinance committee? Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the second part of that number two B, we didn't address that.
Storage containers and dumpsters?
No, 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 no. Number two, purchase of town properties.
Oh, yeah, you're right, okay.
I'm sorry.
My fault. B, plat four, lot 632, 633, and 634, request from Steven Maurisi to purchase.
So, Mr. Chairman, part of that property is in the city of Providence, and I could tell you that there's no way that you could build on that property. Mr. Maurisi has agreed to that, but it abuts his property and would like to purchase it. I also had Mr. Andolfo appraise the property, and he thought that this was a more than fair amount to sell that property to Mr. Maurisi. Mr. Maurisi, I think, is here. Maurisi? Yeah, sorry. So if there are any questions, and we've been talking about this with Mr. Maurisi for maybe a couple of years now. So, I can guarantee you that it's basically unbuildable, and it was another portion of some property between the town and Providence that has been on the tax rolls a number of times.
Okay, does any, come, come up to the mic, just state your name for the record, please.
Steven Maurisi.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, you all have the information in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three. Rhode Island Hazard Mitigation Plan 2024 Update. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote to pass a resolution concerning the plan update. Mayor? Okay, you all have the resolution in front of you. Is there any questions?
Just, this is the same resolution that we passed five years ago. We just had to renew it. And honestly, this is a two-year process that we're on the end of. Once this gets accepted, we already have approximately $2 million of grants ready to go, just being held up. I just need official approval.
Okay. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, but I gotta go to. Okay, item number twenty-four. Beckside Road. Councilman Laporte requests discussion and possible vote on flooding issues on Beckside Road. I know Councilman Bacala will be handling that. We have residents here. Councilman, do you want?
Well, Mr. Laporte obviously could not be here, so being in District One, we have Mr. Salvatore here, we have Dave, the mayor, and everything, and hopefully we can come out of here tonight with a resolution and a plan to get something done. So, as far as that, I mean, I can open the floor to, I know where we're standing, Bernie, I don't know if you want to. Yep, okay, yeah.
Just have a seat, please.
I know we talked about some solutions, and I think what we've talked about is probably the best, if we can obtain that.
Yeah, so there's two options that we can come with.
Bernie, Bernie, can you just talk into the microphone? Yes, you're in the business.
Need to go? Sure, sure. Thank you, thank you, Bernie. David D'Amico with D'Amico Engineering Technologies at 2080 Mineral Spring Avenue in North Providence. And so, I've looked at the of tying in the eight buildings. I believe they're duplexes along Beckside, four on one side, four on the other. And we looked at two options right now, and one is obviously gravity. And that, obviously, in the long run is the most effective relative to maintenance. Bernie has all the equipment, and they're very used to maintaining a gravity line like that, and we have that design out there. I just updated, because our original estimates were from like 424 the last time we were in front of the, I think it was the Public Safety Committee. And so, if we go with the gravity, I would fund, so a funding amount of around $490,000 for that. I would expect it to come lower in a competitive bid, but for the town's purposes, I would, I would fund approximately $490,000. Now, the second one, design would be to do what we call a low-pressure force main. And that calls for a three-inch HDPE pipe down, down the street. Only have to bury that at four feet. And then each building can tie into that, but the building would need a grinder pump for each building. Very common system in Warwick. There are thousands of these in the Warwick area, mainly because they're very safe for the environment. They don't leak, and, and that's a problem for the bay in that area. We don't really have that problem here, but it's very effective. And we're looking at a price of around, if we would have funded that, if you were looking to fund that, I would put that at about $386,000. That's my, that's my number, my estimate number, if I was looking to, if you were looking to fund that. Now, we did, Bernie did solicit a, a price from a contractor, which is a great idea to do. This is back in December of '24, so about eight months ago, eight or nine months ago. And they came up with a price between $275,000 to $325,000.
Actually, their verbiage is a rough guesstimate on that based on unknowns. And you could see on there, there's some exclusion.
And is that still going through the front and through the street, or is that?
It could go down the street, or it could go in the back in the form of an easement.
Is me, all right.
And the only reason why we looked at the back in the form of an easement is because they wouldn't have to swing their plumbing around to make the hook up in the front, because all their plumbing goes out the rear of the building.
It's already there. I mean, that's where it's. So, for lack of a better term, to not reinvent the wheel, is it possible to fix what's the, you know, like you say, getting, because I know we don't want to go on people's property, so we're going to have to create an easement to fix that and go in there, but is that, I just want to make sure we're not putting a Band-Aid on something that needs stitches, that's all.
Right. It just could go either in the street or in the back of the property. In the back of the property, there will be no utility conflicts. There's already a sewer established. You can develop easement, get in, put the sewer. It can be without sewer probably maybe an hour or so. Once it's in, they can use existing sewer. And then, or it could be put in the roadway. It is a very shallow cut. That's the reason for the most economical numbers, because you're not starting at eight feet and then excavating to ten feet of water. And that's a very deep cut in the unknowns as far as boulders, ledge.
Ledge, and evidence, yeah.
So that takes that out of the frame. So that's the choice.
That's all more applicable to me, I don't know about anybody else, but. I do want to add that, I do want to add, if you go in the back, you have to do two. You have to do two lines, right? Because, you know, they face each other, the buildings face each other, so you're talking both sides, to be able to get all eight. You know. Well, I'm thinking we have to do, well, right, we have to do one.
As far as the other side of the street, there have been no complaints on the other side of the street. That sewer is active and working now, so other than wanting it in the roadway, I have not had, or have associated with complaints on that side of it.
I think somebody's got their hand raised behind you.
We'll get these, let them fresh moving.
So we have a couple of solutions, at least?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
At this point, I would say I would go with a pump sewer in the middle of the roadway and backside. That would be my choice.
Yep.
One sewer, and they can purchase their macerator pump and then turn their plumbing around to meet that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Many of the residents have questions?
So, up to recently, that was a true statement about the other side not having any issues. However, I did send Steve Laporte some photos. Roto-Rooter's been out there on several occasions recently. I spoke with the homeowner directly across the street from us. They said that they've experienced issues with the sewage backing into their home. I think they thought it was an isolated incident for them. I assured them it's not, because it's heading down the same way. They had no idea where the sewer was going. So they are up against exactly what we were up against some twenty-plus years ago. And how quickly theirs will go, will it last as long, I don't know. So it's not a matter of wanting the sewer in the street. I think ultimately, when you have to redo the sewer lines in the back of the homes on one side, you are definitely going to have to redo the sewer lines on the opposite side. Therefore, you're doubling the cost, even though the cost initially for one side might be less. To put it in the middle of the road, this is not a want. It's the smartest financial decision, because you're taking care of both sides. Okay, and I do have photos of the Roto-Rooter truck in front of the homes pulling out sewer. If you'd like to see them, but I did pass them to Steve Laporte. Unfortunately, he advised he wasn't going to be able to be here.
Okay, so, does anybody have any questions on this? So, Councilman, are we referring this back to committee, or are we making a decision tonight?
Um, well, I was, I was thinking that myself, not to prolong it one more step, because we're on this, but we're talking to them, if we could have one more meeting with everybody together, even if it's not in a committee meeting, if we meet with the constituents and maybe Bernie and the mayor, just to see what our best option is.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. Is that, and what you're saying, and I want to, you know.
I don't think they were aware of this. You know, they weren't, they weren't apparently aware of this, otherwise.
Well, that's what we're just saying, there was no problems on the other side of the street. Now there is, and if we're going to fix a problem, like I said, I don't want to put a Band-Aid on it and spend and waste money when we can fix it.
Why would they just do it?
Yeah.
Back up at any time.
Yes.
It could have been a backed-up lateral. I have no data on it. But putting it in the middle of the road in a low-pressure pump sewer is the most economical way to go at this point. Instead of developing one line, middle of the road, a shallow cut, and that is a little relief to the taxpayers if they're going to fund this.
Okay.
I would prefer it to be in this type of setting, because the last meeting we had did not go all that well. It was very unprofessional, I thought, because we were asking questions, myself included, probably the primary of the questions. You were there at the meeting. I think we all agreed it was not very professionally handled.
Didn't.
Bernie was upset, stormed out, didn't want to deal with it. So I'd rather it be something that we can actually take, you know, situation and try to.
I can assure you, it will, it will be in this setting, but we may just have a meeting with us just to get everything into particulars, and then it's going to come across this council to be, to be vetted and actually get voted on to, for the final.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to continue this matter to the next town council meeting. We have to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks to announce the special election that's coming up, so we'll, we'll put that on this agenda.
You won't have to wait a whole, you know.
We'll make sure you get notified.
All right, and I can promise you, I'll be with Mr. Laporte.
I'll make that motion. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number twenty-three, update on public safety building. Councilman Laporte requests discussion and possible vote on the sale of the public safety building. Councilman Bacala?
It's on my lap again. Mayor, I think you just wanted to, if there's any movement with Douglas or anybody that's, you know, with it, are we at a stalemate? Are we still waiting for them, or? Okay. So I guess just push it till, and push it till next month?
Okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to continue this to the September meeting.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. All right.
Going back to.
Back to the beginning. Item number five, zone change amendment. Town council to consider approval of an application from Conley Law and Associates to amend Article, was that five? It's five, section four, zero, nine, E of the zoning ordinance of the town of North Providence. This application was advertised in the Providence Journal on July 11th, 18th, and 25th, 2025, for hearing on this date. This matter is going to be continued to the September meeting. Do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Proposed ordinance. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council will consider passage of the following proposed ordinance. Six, ordinance, ordinance 25-007Z. An ordinance amending the town of North Providence zoning ordinance, Article Four, Section 409E. Do I have a motion to pass? Ordinance 25-007Z. Is there a motion to pass?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? Maybe none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven, ordinance 25-008. An ordinance amending fee schedules for building construction, renovations, zoning, and planning fees to be charged by the building, zoning, and planning officials. Do I have a motion to pass? Ordinance 25-008.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock. Any questions? Maybe none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Okay, we have to rescind, back to ordinance. Item number six, ordinance 25-007Z. An ordinance amending the town of North Providence zoning ordinance, Article Four, Section 409E. Do I have a motion to rescind that due to its relation to item number five that is being continued?
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to continue? Item number six, ordinance 25-007Z. Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, outdoor license. Town council to consider the approval of an outdoor license for Post de la Vie, 1342 Douglas Avenue, North Providence. Can you just come up and state your name?
Victoria Susuza.
Thank you. Okay, you all have the information in front of you. Is there any questions?
I, I have a question, Mr. President.
Councilman?
That currently parking on that side of the building?
A part of it, yes.
So you're going to be losing quite a few parking spaces?
Yes, but I wasn't planning on taking up the whole, like, if you see the space, well, and the picture doesn't really show, but it's just a mock-up, but I wanted to actually do half of this. So half of the parking spot, you'd have to, I don't have a picture of the actual parking space with me. But there's about like four parking spots on that side.
I'm sorry?
There's about four parking spots on the side. Three to, yeah, around four, actually.
So you would end the outdoor dining at nine o'clock and then ten o'clock on?
Friday and Saturday.
Okay. And there's not gonna be any loud music or anything outside, you know that, right?
No, I don't have any speakers or anything outside.
Is, is this gonna be seasonal or is it? Okay, so it's.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion been made by Councilman Van McGeady, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Item number nine, class F-one liquor license, town council to consider a vote for the approval of a class F-one license for Behind the Bars Mixology LLC. For an event at Camp Mian on August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve? Motion been made by Councilman Pollock, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number ten, class F-one liquor license. Town council to consider a vote for the approval of a class F-one liquor license for Easy Bar LLC. For events at Camp Mian on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Pollock, seconded by Councilman Van McGeady, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number eleven, private investigator license. Town council to consider the approval of a new private investigator license for Anthony Edward Matarisi, ten Sherry Drive, North Providence. Can you just come up to the microphone, please? Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Matarisi.
Thank you. Okay, you all have the information in front of you, is there any questions for Mr. Matarisi? I have none, do I have a motion to approve? Motion been made by Councilman Van McGeady, seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number twelve, JL and Bowery Investment LLC, DBA Dana's Sports Lounge, representative. Of Dana's Lounge to appear for a three-month check-in on the opening of the business after a flood and the meeting of requirements to license.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, uh, John Manny on behalf of JL Bowery Investments. Uh, the status of the uh, Dana's Lounge is, they're getting closer to opening. Um, there was a certification that was needed, uh, Amanda Thornley's gonna be the person, she's got the certificate, she has to pay the state fee. And they have to clear up the state taxes. We expect that'll be done by the next council meeting. So asking uh, if it could be put over till that date. And in the event that they get all their paperwork and everything is paid and shown to the town, that it be done administratively. In the event they get done quicker than expected, they're almost finished inside, but it's been a chore.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Do you have a motion to continue this to the September meeting? Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Very much. And congratulations.
Item number thirteen, Elite Lounge and Bistro LLC, DBA Elite Lounge and Bistro, summons was delivered to Carlos Nolasco Acevedo. Registered agent for Elite Lounge and Bistro LLC, DBA Elite Lounge and Bistro located at seventeen fifty-nine Minto Spring Avenue. North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV Liquor and Entertainment. Licenses for this establishment, the failure to make payment. The town of North Providence will please details consistent with the required conditions of their license. This item was continued to this date. Just state your name for the record, please.
Carlos Nolasco.
Alright.
Did you work, did you work something out with the police department?
Yes, I did what Mario said. I made a payment for July and August came in, I'm uh, making a payment for August and I'm gonna keep making payments. Moving forward.
Okay. Alright, thank you, I mean, as long as you made that agreement. I'm gonna remove this item from the agenda.
Yes, thank you, I made a payment for.
Keep up the good work.
Good luck, thank you for cooperation, okay. Item number fourteen, seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge LLC, DBA seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge. Summons was delivered to Liz Vasquez, president and registered agent for seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge LLC, DBA seven eight seven. Restaurant and Lounge located at twelve seventy Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing. And possible vote concerning the BV Liquor and Entertainment licenses for this establishment. And the failure to make payment to the town of North Providence for please details consistent with the required conditions of their license. This item was continued to this date. Is anyone here from seven eight seven? Okay, I will make a move.
Kevin, uh, community police officer, I'm sure.
Sorry about that.
We're gonna make you sit in front from now on.
Lieutenant, any update on uh?
Yes, they did make a uh, twenty-five hundred dollar payment uh, for the month. And I was informed as of yesterday, there's no more details at that location from the Colonel.
No, there's no more details, so.
No more details in an attempt, I guess, to help them make payments.
Okay, so. Was that twenty-five hundred for services rendered before or now?
That's towards the bill, they still have an outstanding balance of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventeen and thirty-nine cents. That was from the clerk today.
And I'm, I'm gonna assume no more details so we don't keep racking up a bill that we're not gonna get paid for.
That's correct.
So, so at this point, we gotta.
Lieutenant, when was that payment made, twenty-five hundred?
Leave on July thirtieth. Twenty-five hundred dollars.
When, when was the previous payment prior to that, do you know?
It was sometime in June, she's been consistent.
Uh, so I did wanna ask you that question, I know the last time we were here. They were missing payments, but she's, she said she paid and then we said we didn't have any payments. Was that rectified? And she was, she was in the right. I'm just saying she wasn't. She wasn't misleading.
That was my error.
No, no, that's fine.
Our system, I didn't realize that she comes into the police department. He's our clerk, it goes into our, our record system under the details which I don't oversee.
So for this year, has she been making payments since January?
To the best of my analysis.
So she, I just wanna make sure she wasn't.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, but the, the payments started being made of her services being rendered at that point in time, not earning back money.
Well, I don't know, I, I was going by the back balance, I was assuming that's, no matter what she's paying, it's going off the back balance anyway.
Guys, alright, let's, let, let's. I'm gonna refer this to the finance committee, I don't like negotiating payment schedules in public, I don't even know sometimes why this comes before us. I, I know it's a condition of their license, but. In all due respect to the business owners, the police department, we really shouldn't be negotiating this out. In a public forum, so I'm gonna refer this matter on seven eight seven to the finance committee. And then uh, and that's in the form of a motion. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Van McGeady, seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? All those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, six-month check, town council to conduct a six-month check on eviction license for Soldi Portugal Restaurant, fifteen twenty-five. Smith Street, North Providence. Hey, you all have the information in front of you, is there any questions?
Hello.
Everything's going well?
Yes.
Okay.
Much better.
What's that?
Much better.
Good, good. Alright, I'm gonna remove this item from the agenda, thank you for coming, good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, no.
Oh. Item number sixteen, request to reconsider received from S. Alex Jackson from three sixty venue to reconsider request. For a full BV lic- license. Um, we spoke to Mr. Jackson, this item is gonna be continued to the next town council meeting. Do I have a motion to continue?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Van McGeady, seconded by Councilman Pollock, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number seventeen, ordinance introduction, discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero nine regarding business licenses. Do you have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero nine?
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Van McGeady, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number eighteen, planning board decision, council president Odiella requests discussion and possible vote on a planning board decision. I placed this matter on the uh, agenda after hearing from constituents for the last year or so. And I know myself, Councilman Van McGeady, and Councilman Pollock have heard from these constituents, and I believe. I think we're all in agreement that they're in the right. A planning board decision was rendered to create a buffer zone. With aperitives or trees or whatever, and a different buffer zone was constructed. The gentlemen that have brought this issue to me have the zoning or planning board decision on the record. And then there was a decision made. An administrative decision by either the planning director or in the attorney for the planning zoning board. Without the board's approval. Now. They may have thought this would not be an issue. But it's continued to linger before this council. This matter has nothing to do with this council, it was a planning board decision. These people should not have to deal with this, they're in the right. They have the decision on record. Too often now, this council's becoming a complaint hotline for things that are going wrong. Things like this should not happen. So I'm gonna make a motion to send a letter to our zoning and building official. I want an answer at the next month's meeting on how they're gonna resolve this matter. It's not fair to these people, they're taxpayers in the town, it's not fair to the business, they're running a great business. We have no complaints on the business. A decision was made, and then without our approval or our even knowledge. An administrative decision was made to, to change the buffer zone, and that's not fair. And everything falls on the lap of us. So, no more. I wanna, I want a resolution to this problem next month. It may not be the resolution we all wanna hear, but there has to be some movement for these people cuz they should not have to deal with that. So, I don't know if you guys wanna add anything? Did I cover everything? State your name for the record, please.
Daniel Montero, one forty-five Lexington Avenue.
Thank you.
And I just want you to all know that, I know yous all heard, heard me calling out for you guys, and you guys been there for me. And I hope we could put this to rest, cuz like you said, it is a good, it is a good business, they are running a good business. It's just that I feel like somebody made a backyard deal. And they did it behind my back, and they did it behind your back, because we came here and they all said they were gonna do what they did. So, thank you.
Alright.
The next meeting, at least he can be here to tell us why he, why he did it.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask that. It was like plenty of times I came, came to the office and he was like, oh, there's a five hundred dollar a month fine, don't worry, he's gonna do it. So I stopped being, stopped being a nag. And then, I'm coming down Lexington, I see the. Plastic bag just sitting on the fence, when they're supposed to, it's supposed to, it's supposed to look nice, they did a nice job, we. Both did a nice job with houses over there, we don't wanna see that, and then. At night, when cars are idling, the fumes are coming through my bedroom window. If that, that buffer zone was there, I have my own trees, I went and bought trees. I mean, I don't have as much money as everybody else, but I eventually put trees there. The only thing I want is just a buffer zone, but thank you guys.
Do I have a motion to, go ahead, councilman.
Okay, make the motion, I'll, I'll add to it, please.
Okay, do I have a motion to send that letter? I'll uh, go over it with you this week, what to put in it. Uh, to our building official, and have this matter continued to the September meeting. Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock.
I would also like to add that uh, the planning director be in attendance for that meeting.
Okay. Yeah. A motion's been made and seconded, any questions? All those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number nineteen, traffic mirror, Councilman LaPorter requests discussion and possible vote on traffic mirror on pole number two on Lawn Acre Drive.
Uh, I'm gonna take, if, if we could, uh, council president, nineteen through twenty-two. For, cuz I don't see anybody here from any of the addresses, ship them all over to ordinance, cuz they're all stop signs, or no parking. And everything, if we, we can do that, if not, we can go one by one, but nineteen through twenty-two, I'd like to make a motion to send everything to ordinance.
Is there anyone here for items nineteen through twenty-two?
Oh, okay, one.
What, what number are you here for? Oh, okay.
That's, yeah, that's not mine. That's alright, that's, I didn't see anybody, but I could be wrong, my glasses.
Alright, I'll just read them into the record. Item number nineteen, traffic mirror, Councilman LaPorter requests discussion possible vote on traffic mirror on pole number two on Lawn Acre Drive. Item number twenty, resident parking only, Councilman LaPorter requests discussion possible vote on resident parking only. For twenty-one oh one Minto Spring Avenue at the corner of Brown Avenue. Resident, uh, item number twenty-one, resident parking only, Councilman LaPorter requests discussion and possible vote on resident parking only at fifty-three Wentz Scott Lane. And item number twenty-two. Resident parking only, Councilman LaPorter requests discussion and possible vote on resident parking only at three Heritage Circle. Do you have a motion to send items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two to the ordinance committee? Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-five, Cleveland Street, Councilman Van McGeady requests discussion and possible vote on parking on Cleveland Street, councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, so uh, Lieutenant Ginden and I, um, were uh, working with a constituent over there. Those streets in that area are pretty tight. Um, so the uh, police department has worked on a solution to help with the um. Um, the, the, the traffic, the parking issues over there. So, with that being said, I'd like to see if we can have a more permanent solution, and like to send this to the ordinance committee.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Van McGeady, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, Gillen Blat, uh, Gillen Platt Block Party, Councilman Van McGeady requests discussion possible vote on Gillen Platt Block Party at Randall Road. Councilman?
So uh, this is a uh, uh, annual block party, or semi-annual, we should say. Uh, block party that uh, we do in Gillen Platt. We do it on Randall Road, unfortunately, the, uh, one of the past storms that we had caused a lot of damage over there. Uh, the plan was to have this block party in September, um, but now it's looking like it might have to go to October. Uh, that being said, I'd like to get the ball rolling anyway, if uh, we can. Uh, take a, well, let's, let's first, uh, I'll make a motion that uh, uh, to allow for a block party. On Randall Road in North Providence in October, uh, official date to be determined. Um, subject to approval from the police department as well as the fire department. Um, which I don't foresee any issues as we've done it here before, so that's in the form of a motion.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Van McGeady, seconded by Councilman Pollock, any questions? All those in favor? All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, Friendship Street, Councilman Pollock requests discussion possible vote on parking on Friendship Street between Minto Spring Avenue and Alexander Street. Councilman?
Yes, Mr. President, uh. Councilman Van McGeady and myself were reached out to by some constituents about three weeks ago regarding another issue. And while then, actually Lieutenant Ginden was in attendance. They expressed some concerns about. Parking from Jackies. Especially on busy nights, they're not able to park or have them be in front of their houses. So. At, speaking to them and Lieutenant Ginden, I'd like to send this to ordinance requesting. Resident only parking from Minto Spring on that side of the road down to Alexander Street. Actually, both sides of the road, cuz I think might be some other signs that people put up on the other side of the road. So, if you, feel free to speak.
Just uh, state your names and let us, let us know what's going on a little over there. Councilman Pollock, fill me in on a little bit of the story.
Alexander Summons.
Thank you.
Dion Doughty.
Thank you.
Dennis Polier.
Holly Polier.
Thank you. So, uh, councilman, this is where they um. Where you exit the parking lot?
They're actually across the street from Jackies. But on busy nights, people are parking all in front of their houses.
Across Minto Spring Avenue?
Across from the Jackies, behind Jackies, across.
Okay.
And to be clear, we are actually the house right behind Jackie's Galaxy's parking lot.
Our house is the end of their parking lot, where everybody parks on that side of it, so parking lot ends, our house is right there.
Is that the blue house?
They're the blue house. At the other driveway entrance, and we're at the back entrance, where the black fence is. So we're abutting both driveways.
Yeah, that gets really congested over there.
You can't get a car down there, but they said they can get a fire truck down there. And the kids are speeding up and down that street all day long.
Okay. And lieutenant, you, you're okay? And lieutenant, you, you're okay with this uh, solution? I appreciate that, because they shouldn't have to deal with that, that's not fair, I, I, that's, that's bad over there.
We have children and animals on this road and elderly, it's, it gets crazy.
Okay.
It gets absolutely insane.
Alright, we're gonna send this to the ordinance committee and get the ball rolling on this and uh, try and get that expedited. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Pollock, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-eight, Our Lady of Fatima Hospital, discussion possible vote on the sale of Our Lady of Fatima Hospital. Um, we will continue this to the September meeting, we should have some more information on the potential sale that the attorney general's gonna come out with, do you have a motion? To continue?
So moved, second.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Van McGeady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-nine, resignation letter. Received letter of resignation to be accepted with regret from Joseph Scorpio of the North Providence Zoning Board. Do you have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty, claims submitted, town council discussion and possible vote with regards to claims received in the following. Joshua Fernandez, thirty-one Park Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, Jema Zampa, fifty-eighth Countryside Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island. Damian Jackson, fifty-two Thelma Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, and Carissa Adams, thirteen Leasy Lane, Providence, Rhode Island. Do you have a motion to send these to the claims committee? Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Van McGeady, all those in favor?
Aye.